So, I'd like to try this. That one's weird. It's got a gavel. I'm gonna use it. Alright. So, we'll call this meeting to order for the Planning Commission, December 12th, 2018. And let's get the votes. I...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we are all here. Alright, so the first item on the agenda is the public hearing on subdivision plan amendment for AV1229310 and AV, ABR38 and AV1330E. And making these three parcels into two, to be numbered AV1229310, which is 3.1 acres, and AV, ABR8, which is 8.16 acres. And they're located at our near 1386 North Mount Zion. Of course, we have blizzies here as owners. And so, you want to make a motion to open the hearing on that mouthful?
I make a motion that we open the public hearing on subdivision plan amendment for AV1229310, AV, ABR3, I should just say Apple Valley Ranch. Uh, 38, AV1330E, making these three parcels into two parcels. Number AV1229310 and AV, Apple Valley Ranch, 8, 8.16 acres.
Alright, I second. Vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Alright, so, hearing is open on that. So, I guess, do you want to...
Go ahead and say anything on it?
Yeah.
So, this is Tishai's property. And we have three lots, basically. We have the one in front that fronts the road, and we have one behind it. And what we've found out in the process of trying to allow access on a third parcel we own next to it is that the one that we're living on is not even legal. And so, we're trying to clean all of it up by combining the front lot with the back lot. We're pulling off some property off that front lot that we have to allow access into what is really technically an illegal lot because it's landlocked right now. And so, we're gonna make, unlandblock it by giving it access to the road. And so, we're basically taking three lots and making two out of it. And making one illegal lot into two legal lots is what we're doing.
We like to call them unapproved lots.
Well, it's an illegal split, I guess, because of, if we came in and asked for a lot split it, for example, right now, and make that three acre parcel, you know, that's basically what we did. We were leasing that property from Shelby Board, you know, probably 20 years, just leasing it from him. And he decided he wanted to sell it to us, and so, we bought it from him. And, you know, we just pulled it off and, you know, probably didn't do it right when we did it, not knowing any better. And so, we're doing, we're just trying to fix everything so it's all legal and above board. And does anybody have any questions in particular, or I could answer for you?
How many flag lots are going to be back there?
There's only the, there's really not even a flag lot. The way we've drawn this, we have 100 foot of frontage on the Mount Zion Drive, which makes that a legal lot and not a flag lot.
So, this'll, this'll be the only lots between you and Angel's, right?
Right. And it's, it's at three acres, it has a white vinyl fence.
Yeah.
But it'll have a legal frontage on it, so it's actually just a legal lot, not a flag lot anymore.
Now, is that, you back to Shelby?
It's next to Shelby. And it's, you know, behind Darters and, uh, Lane, I think it is, is it? Is it right now?
Yeah. That makes sense.
So, it's right next to our property as well. Any other questions?
So, everyone's good? So, I move that we close the public hearing on, on the plan amendment for AV1229310 and AV, ABR38 and AV1330E. Making three parcels into two and numbering them AV1229310 and AV, ABR8.
Second.
Vote?
Aye.
Aye? Aye?
Aye.
Alright. So, I guess we... So, I'm looking at my records and... That's the next item of discussion.
Discussion, yeah.
Yep. Well, we don't, now, we decide how this all seems to be legit.
I don't think it's a benefit to them to bring in lots into 20th or 21st century rural, century or whatever.
It's making a...
They are in the 20th century. Okay.
I'm saying...
And we're not, we're not changing it to, you know, agricultural rights.
The zone just stays what it is.
What is that?
The zone just stays as it is.
And what is the zone?
Ag. It's already ag.
You know, higher, yeah, the whole area.
Yeah, the whole, sort of, you know, where we started.
I just want to go on record as saying, I don't think it's a great idea to have agricultural mixed right in with residential. I know it's already zoned that way, but I think we ought to try as a council or as a body to avoid that. There needs to be transition from residential to agricultural. It shouldn't be flooded right up. Because if these guys sell it, and somebody wants to bring in a hog farm there, I mean, I know you don't have any intention of doing that.
Well, there's, there's another one that's in ag to do that as well, but everything on three sides of these lots are all ag, everywhere.
I think, I just, I'm just saying, I think it would be good to establish, like, what was the zone called? A rural estate zone? Like, establish that as a kind of a stepping stone to agricultural from residential. So, I just wanted to be on record as...
One thing I'd bring up is the new three acre lot would be too small for agriculture, so that's something I hadn't really thought of until just now, until Blake brought it up. Because ag is supposed to be five minimum.
Yeah.
So, hadn't thought of that one.
They'll just make it a non-conforming.
Yeah.
Because it's already existed.
Yeah, it's already...
Hmm.
Unless you want to change it to something that makes... Well, we could, I don't know, people...
Some of us is, probably ag before, I think it was even ag before.
Oh, yeah, it's been ag since 2004.
So...
You know, the whole valley was agricultural to start with, right? And then, we started putting homes in the middle of it. And I just feel that it's wise to, you know, to set, to make an orderly transition from agricultural to residential so that we don't, in the future, get faced with ugly situations where, you know, you never know what the future schemes are. They might decide to sell it, or the person might want to put, you know, cows on it or something right next to your house, so...
Oh, and there's still one lot on that Mount Zion Circle, Mount Zion Drive for sale. Mount Zion Circle, it lets up to that.
It doesn't, well, I guess maybe that's that shit. One corner of it does.
So, I mean, I know your intentions aren't so good, but we just, you know, we need to look.
Now, is this gonna be the 3.1 acres?
Bro, 3.3.
I think it's a little bigger than that because we wiped out the frontage on it. Took it from a flag lot to a legal lot.
Okay.
So, it's...
Yeah, it says 3.1, but I think it's actually 3.3, doesn't matter much.
My son's building a house on it. He's not gonna raise pigs. He's not gonna have any cows, and he's not gonna have any smelling things next to me. Trust me.
Is he gonna build a big barn?
No.
No.
No weens, no teacups, no...
Would you, would you consider changing it to, to, I can never remember the name of the zone.
Rural stuff.
RA2.5 is what you're thinking of. And I, I'm asking to do that because of the current limitations regarding garages, that you can only have a garage at 5% of the footprint.
Is that true on real estate?
Other than my understanding is that we have a 5% limit on the garage space, which all of us kind of already have agreed that that's limiting.
Yes.
And I hate to...
It is, but, you know...
But at this point, we're not looking to do anything with it other than build a single family home.
I totally understand, I own a view, and I totally respect it, but, you know, I own a lot on the other side of the road, and I'm residential, and what if I want to, I mean, I don't know, it just seems like we're gonna have a residential area, it ought to kind of all conform.
It'll feel that way, it'll feel that way, there's no doubt about it. But I, my preference is to not do that because, number one, I don't have to, but number two, I don't want to spend an extra $500 trying to change a zone to something that could also limit the ability to put a four car garage on a little property. You know, if that's what I, you know, want to do. And that's the only thing, we don't buy and build a barn like we have or any of that stuff on that property.
That was me, or...
My understanding from council is that it's just a non-conforming, but property is a target zone over here.
And are these Shelby's Great Mines or is that different?
No.
Next to Shelby's. Actually, where he grew his water plants, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's Great Mines, Russia, and it's such a little...
Which one is darker?
I don't even know which one it is.
Oh, it's a good deal.
You want, you want to move?
Yeah. I move that we approve the, a vote on the subdivision plan amendment for AV-1-2-29-8, owners party in Tishlizier.
For it to the town council.
For it, yeah.
Or approve it.
Or approve it.
Alright.
I second.
Okay, vote?
Aye.
Aye? Aye?
Aye.
Woo!
No, no thanks, Tish.
No, 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 no weens, no thanks. No waiter, no kids, right?
No thanks. Pretty random bunch of kids.
There you go.
I can see you from my house.
Alright, and then, item three, to look at preliminary site plan review for the Miles Mark subdivision, including parcels AV1319 East and AV1319A. And this is just to kind of see what the plan is, right?
Yeah, it's, this is just some step notes on that project. This doesn't deter us from a briefing, it just might, this is just really a worksheet for them to show what they have to do in order to possibly qualify for a preliminary site plan, or, excuse me, order of plan. These are some things they have to jump through.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, I gave them our, oh, I gave you another one.
So...
And so, these were just some suggested problems on Miles, Miles Mark. One of his access, he's only asking for five lots on this because we can't go, I think the maximum we could go right now without having a secondary access is about 12.
Okay.
But he thought until he gets the access taken care of, that he would like to just have five so he could go ahead and have his son build a house out there and tell him to figure out the rest of it, getting people off of there for the secondary access. So...
It's high wood, just a tractor.
What's the initial access? I'm not sure.
It's Rome Way.
Rome Avenue, you mean?
Yeah, Rome, just goes right up through there.
The Rome Way?
Rome Avenue.
Avenue, you live on that?
Yeah.
It just goes up past you, it's, Rome just stops right now a lot of times, and we just keep going right through up to the quiddles lots up there. But he was, he's only wanting to put five in just to have at least an initial kickoff on that until he figures out the order exit. I think he's got a little problem on order exit, but he seems to be pretty...
It's not designed for any more lots. It's, it's, I, I misspoke last meeting, I said it was minimum for one... That is, that's a one lane road. Quite a ways there, long, long bit of curve. This is scary.
Well, isn't it okay up to 32 without a secondary access though?
30.
30 lots. 30 lots. So, you have 12.
We're, we're less than 30.
It's supposed to be around about at the end of a road.
From the back way, is that?
No, Rome Way would go all the way up. In other words, we just extend Rome Way up. Right now, Rome Way is just a dead end road, it's not even a close south.
Like last I lived, 40 homes planned, I believe, maybe that's changed.
It's 32.
32.
32.
But he can't do that many without a secondary road that she has to figure out. That's gotta come to him. So, at this point, he just wants to have five, let his son build his house up there. Councilman wants to build his house up on the point.
Yeah.
But he would still have to have a roundabout and a road to it, they don't, you still don't own the road, the property that abuts it, do you? Rome, Rome?
Yeah, we saw. Yeah.
I just looked this afternoon, and it's not in your name, it's somebody else's name.
Yeah, it was a recent transaction.
As of today, it wasn't recorded.
Yeah, I can show you the, I can show...
A public road, so until that problem is solved, and then, it has to end in, I call this act, if they, if they want to do it, and this, I'm not sure, I looked at what they showed there, and it, and it doesn't show any turnaround, it doesn't show...
It's a loop.
Oh, there is.
Yeah, but it's not a loop, there's no roads.
There's roads.
It's gonna be a future, it's the whole subdivision, it shows the whole loop drill.
I know, but on this, it doesn't show anything. It doesn't show, it shows five lots floating in.
I know, but it shows the future, it shows the road coming around, and they're just gonna make that a temporary access so that it loops. Anyway, he's gonna get an affidavit from the people he's got a contract from, so we'll just get that to turn into, to mayor.
So, it's a, it's under contract, but you haven't actually purchased it.
Yeah, well, he's, they purchased it.
So, that, that will need to be, French right, that'll need to be cleared up because it needs to be in your name, or you have to have an access to that public road, access to that program. That will be a problem, so we, we got that done.
We could get an easement, yeah, we could do that.
Well, you have to have frontage, so an easement wouldn't work. So, that's where you'll just need to, what you'll need to do is before any final plans approved, you'll need to have that property.
Transaction, okay.
Also, I'm curious about, have you guys done per testing up there to see if septic are gonna work, or?
We, we just wanted to get your comments here, that's the next round that tackles, we'll be up there doing that. We've walked it, there are spots for it, we've just gotta go do our due diligence on that.
Because that's gonna kind of shoot you in the foot if you don't have a place to...
Exactly.
I mean, I, I...
We just gotta get equipment in there so we can dig. So, if we get going on this, then it kind of gets us going, and then, we can, you know, bulldoze us a trail in there so we can do our perk test.
We can't do it without it.
Well, we just don't want to go messing anything up right now until we get...
I mean, it seems like it would make more sense to go do a perk test before you bulldoze a road in there. I mean, it's kind of putting the cart before the horse, because if you can't, if you can't...
Well, yeah, I know what you mean. We're not gonna go push trees down, create a road, we're just got it, when I say bulldoze, we gotta track our way to the back to, to do that, I understand, yeah. Yeah, we can do that.
If it was me building it, I would want to know that I could do that before I committed to all this other stuff, so I'm there on the first step.
Yeah.
Well, really, all we're doing is hearing what you're hoping to do, right? I mean, we're not, there's nothing we're doing that's like...
They have the pathologist engineering.
Yeah. We're just kind of hearing the plan now, we're not really deciding anything.
Yeah, this is, this is non-binding. In other words, we say, yeah, we like this, okay, given you have to solve all these problems, it's, it's non-binding on our part because we don't have a primary plan or anything else yet. Am I saying that right, Frank?
Yeah, I mean, we just...
We're just, we're just trying to give you a ballpark on these...
Well, let me, let me just, if I could, you know, the way the laws are structured now, with the preliminary, if you're doing the site plan review, which to me, it's not, this has not been platted, so this is like a flat review almost.
It's not even changed zone yet, so it's...
No.
This is just a, an opinion.
Opinion.
We don't even have this...
As long as it's, because you will need to spell out all the conditions.
Right.
If you, if you are, if your process is to say, we approve this, you'll have to spell out all the conditions that you have.
We're not approving anything.
We're, we're not doing any of that.
Yeah, we don't have to...
We're just hearing what the idea is, and as long as they know what all the...
And any objections they have, we just want to hear them, so then, they can solve it.
Yeah, we just want to know what the problem is.
Just gave us one.
I just already gave you that at the same time I gave you one, so I haven't had no time to...
Study it. So, of course, being up there on the, on the bude, all the building needs to be 75 feet back.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, very...
So, it's, it's 75.
Mild downward facing lights, I know we don't want to see a bunch of blast lights everywhere. And so, protect our dark skies and all that, so that's kind of an important thing.
Okay, so it's, you two said it's 75, so I'm gonna adjust that road 25 feet, so...
Look at the hillside ordinance.
I was thinking it's 50, so we're gonna move that over 25.
Yeah, because we, that's...
And what's going on with that road that you guys started cutting up there that you weren't supposed to?
Travis is not here, my dad. I saw the machine disappear, is that true?
Yeah, the machine's gone.
I asked, I asked them to, you know, minimize what we got damaged down, but I don't know if I was talking about him.
So, we're not planning on pursuing that?
Oh, no.
It would chuck it up the hill, off-road, off-road trip.
We're looking at trying to go east or under west.
That's not happening.
Yeah.
We're calling that a secondary access, but could that be primary access at some point?
What, the one to the east?
The one to the east.
Yeah, definitely could.
Because, oh, really, I'm not, I'm not following this, come down to a one lane road.
You can hop on your bicycle and go to the bike trails on it.
That'd be great.
Yeah, as far as I know, that's why he's just asking for the five. One of the other ones are gonna grow up with them directly. Have the other avenues. Scott must be your neighbor's horse. Thanks.
But even so, it's a one lane road, that's something that would have to be improved, right?
I wa, I wasn't going to suggest that, but that's a good idea.
Well, that's, I mean, I would think you can't just have one more road.
Well, you, you drive up there and you're doing this.
If you're gonna have a very underlooked road with wise.
So, if they're gonna continue on road...
No, it's just quite a bit smaller than... Where, where you ever come down?
No, there's like 3 and 1/2 of it running up there.
If somebody does a, a temporary, then they have to do a temporary turnaround. You can't just leave it dead end. So, that's enough, that's how the subdivision ordinance.
You're, you're talking about up on the hill.
Yeah, so they can't just say, someday, we're gonna finish this. They have to do a temporary turnaround that meets fire code.
I guess what you're planning is the same, the road that's on the map, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that temporary turnaround is definitely gonna have to be 96 feet and all that, meet all the requirements on cul-de-sac turnaround and everything. But also, the water system, I see this on number seven, the lawyer...
Sean brought it up to me. I've talked with the water district, and I'm not speaking for them, but they are not in, into having anything they're gonna have to maintain, so generators and that type of stuff are not gonna be feasible as of right now, so. And I'm not for them very much either. I mean, if they don't want to take care of them, I don't want to, I don't want to deal with, deal with them if they aren't taking care of them, so. So, that's something you guys are gonna have to deal with the water company on? If you guys can sell them on this, taking care of that? What's that? Who are you talking to on this? Dale, the water master. Dale. I know, he doesn't, he doesn't want nothing to do with generators.
They've already approved it for Gooseberry Mesa.
What's that? They approved generators and stuff?
Yeah, that's... We're working on it, they own Gooseberry Mesa.
I haven't heard anything approved. Is there anything approved for, for the Gooseberry Mesa then? I haven't heard of anything final.
No, 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 I'm saying that the water district has approved that type of system for their...
Oh, I talked to them just last week, and they said they were against any kind of Palm Palace or anything like that, so...
Well, and it is a big liability to take on.
Yeah.
Pumps go down.
That's true.
Well, dinner go down, we have to buy the generators.
In the meantime, if there's a fire, you know...
When you think of a public service or a utility...
Probably has changed.
So, anyways, to get back to that...
Why please?
Um, that's probably your number one problem, I would say, because, I mean, you're gonna be going up hill, you already know that, but that's a, if you're gonna put 30 more homes up there, I mean, that's a, that's a huge liability on equipment alone. If you get up to 30 homes with generators and stuff like that going...
Is that because the district told you that the, the current pressure over there would not support it?
Okay, so it's above the pressure zone. Above the pressure zone, yeah. But that's how they solved it with the Gooseberry Mesa project, it's in our developer agreement that's, if they're saying, oh, we can't do it that way, it's like, where does this come from then?
Well, they pump, they pump to these tanks, right? So, I mean, a system's put together, we pump.
Yeah, it was gravity in there.
We could even do it, we could even do a temporary, you know, a tank up on the hill that's, that's back, that no one can see afar, and which is high enough for all the houses to give gravity for them.
That's what my suggestion is.
There's solutions to all this.
So, what would you guys think about, what you're gonna achieve, Al? Getting some time to digest this and maybe give us a response to these points so that we can actually see what...
That'd be a great idea, like, go in and just say, hey, here's our work, take care of this, and I will take care of this.
That way, you guys have a chance to think about...
And like, you guys, you can give us feedback and say, well, you know, we don't like your idea there, why don't you do this? Or, hey, you know what, we like that idea, why don't we add, why don't we add to it? Why not add this to it?
This to you.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
So, maybe just take, just a short step back, and then, you guys can consider these points, we can consider them, and get back together.
We like this list, to tell you the truth.
Yeah.
Seriously, it really helps, because then, we know what you guys are looking for, we got some direction, so it's awesome. It's awesome.
Yeah, I think the project itself, if it can be brought into compliance with...
Yeah, there's some problems there.
Yeah. It should be issues, let's solve issues or take care of it, so...
The, the number one item there, current town policy and no access to Iowa 59, have we talked about that? So, how would, how are you gonna solve that?
Well, we can, he owns the property that can grant you access for that temporary, we got on our master plan, the road to go there, we, why not give an easement for that temporary access to start it off? Then, as, as stuff progresses and we start building, and here that way, that we spell out, you know, next number of lots slash homes, we have that in, have the bridge in there, and have that tied in. And that's how I'd see doing it, it's to ask for it all at once, it's kind of hard if we do it by baby, if we do it baby steps, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, well, the secondary access was, would be the main street, so...
But, so, you guys, so you guys, so you guys have the okay for that secondary access, it'd be good to just say... But, so you guys, so you guys are, so you guys have the okay for that secondary access, it'd be good to just say, hey, here's, here's it, but the easement, but, that doesn't mean that, oh, uh, now the town has to approve it, if you just do some kind of work with the attorneys and do a development agreement that say, hey, this is a granted easement, as this goes, this phase happens, this hits, this part gets done, that's part of the final plat approvals on this phase, this phase, this phase, boom, it's done, it's built, you didn't have to pay a dime for it, it's done, developers paid for it.
I think we'd prefer to have the road dedicated, though.
Yeah, that's what we...
Shouldn't be an easement, so...
That'd be great.
If we dedicate the road, though, that's just another big stretch of road that we have to maintain.
Yeah, it is.
But they should improve it.
Yeah, it'll be, uh, a, though, I guess, we won't take it as a dirt road, so they pay for it.
And you can require off-site improvements for this case, I don't think it's the right way, but...
Will you lie? I wanna make, um, motion that we...
We don't want it this. Oh, yeah.
And come back at the next time.
And there's nothing to vote for today. But, but yes, I would think that's a good idea, just a little work to do, so...
And if, it sounds like it's the same thing on Redstone too, so we're asked to do that on the... Okay.
The other, if you still wanted to discuss, like, you know, the location and plans for Redstone?
They don't have it here, uh, like, they don't want these, uh, stuff, same thing, uh, Redstone, okay? And we just prepared, uh, these two down Sunday, uh, two in Tappus, I think.
So did, um, the next item is to talk about the, kind of, the idea for, for Redstone, um, did you wanna kind of say, like, where and what and all that?
Yeah, so it's over by the buttes, and it's that one that we discussed last time, and what we could do is, just going through your list, is just address each and every one of these, like, you know, Highway fifty-nine is a topic, and, and, um, I'm actually doing a, um, spot improvement plan right now over on SR nine, and, uh, and have just, I just barely completed a traffic study over on Highway eighty-nine, so we could do one for fifty-nine, so that, it's just a document that goes in your hand, that can be handed and worked out with UDOT, so that, uh, a safe access is allowed and off fifty-nine can be done.
So if you...
So, but, the part that we need to probably really work through on when we look at this is the exact location of that, is we work with UDOT. Is it, and there's some people on the south side of the highway, and those on the north, and UDOT's trying to figure out the exact spot to tie that in, so that it's a safe intersection.
So that would solve your problem for both Miles Mark and Redstone, you got?
Oh, it would, it really would. It'd solve the, it'd solve the problem for all of the battle valley, if you think about it.
Well, it's...
Not until Main Street is connected over to...
Well, I think that's what they were talking about, right?
Gooseberry.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear that, sorry. Yeah.
Yeah, so that'd be kind of a two for one.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
How would it work?
Like, that'd be cheaper to do than, no, no, not really, there's sixes.
It's a mile easy.
There are both sixes that cost, because you got the spot, that one has the spot improvement done, that one doesn't, so. But that, and it has a bridge, and that one doesn't, so.
You know, I...
The way the cost is to set.
I think that the BLM has the vested interest in that safe on and off too, because they have mountain bike trails that are back there.
Well, it's the county, too.
And the county.
See, right now, the county's going full bore over in, uh, I talked to the owner that's dealing with them over there in, uh, Rockville, and that's going full bore, and you're gonna see what the county wants that road in.
They might have...
As an act, they, they went and talked to Rockville people, and the, the guy, the owner over there that, of the land, I actually do his site plans, like, I'm doing the spot improvement over on this, and I'm partying on it. He's been talking to the county commissioners, and they really want this main street, so. And the reason why, they were disappointed none of, none of that funding went to that, which they'd like it to, because, uh, Springdale and Rockville are in dire need of, it's an economically good route, so that people that live in Hilldale, Colorado City, work there. So it's like, can have, can have, uh, can have, uh, can have, uh, they don't have to drive clear down that Highway nine over to seventeen and then back up, so...
Well, they bought three hundred acres for, for our future, I guess.
Yeah. Did I say something wrong?
No.
Oh, I just heard something back behind me, I...
I didn't hear.
Was there...
I think they can't hear.
Oh.
I know, there's too much chatter.
No, when you were saying that, oh, that, that, that road needs to be paved for the people that live in Hilldale, Colorado City, because they work in Springdale, we all went, oh, come on, give us a break, here it is, and twenty-four million on paving a road for a couple hundred people? Come on, that's ridiculous.
What they, what they want to do is they want that to separate this.
Do you want to smell through your gavel, Tim?
I just smelled it.
Hey, okay, I'm, I'm...
What the county, what the county is trying to do is make a second entrance and sign their parks, so they don't have all that traffic.
I understand, but, but, you know, we keep getting this, this, about Hilldale, Colorado City need an access to Springdale, and they're gonna spend twenty-four million dollars on doing it, to me, that's a waste of money when there, there could be other things that they could use that money for. I went to the meeting, Jen, and so I had to know.
They would pay the lot of fifty-nine, really, the, the four lanes on it, a whole lot of it, a whole lot. But, hey, we're...
They're gonna do what they want.
Yeah.
Believe me, it's not too late, whatever it is, or you're in.
And they don't want contracts.
I didn't mean it in any derogatory, I'm just, I'm just saying that if there was an econo, they've looking at the economics of trying to, these commissioners are trying to help out every community in this county, here it is.
If they wanna arise, it wouldn't be quite as...
Just because I said two towns, I didn't mean it as point blank then, you know what I mean?
Only those two towns.
It wouldn't be quite as short, restrict the two towns in the record and replace with all towns.
Yeah.
Building a road on Sheepbridge, better road on Sheepbridge, would cost a whole lot less, so it would be a little bit further, but, a whole lot less.
But then you have the traffic on there.
Let's finish this list, I gotta, I gotta head to Leeds, I've got a, a presentation to the town council over there for, uh, some drainage issues that they're having, to get a project going with UDOT. The, we'll just go through each of these, there's no sense talking about each of these right now, I think the biggest one that I wanted to bring up was the Highway fifty-nine, the other one, the water and everything, we, um, Travis is in the process of acquiring all the easements slash property to get to the tank, so we get stuff and run utilities, loop stuff in, make stuff viable, make stuff work, and so it's all gonna take baby steps, little by little, to get it done, so...
Is there a priority here, I, I know I've asked that before, as to what we're wanting to start first, if you had a choice?
Well, it's the ones just presented to you, you know, Miles Mark, get, get a few of them going in Redstone, and for sure, the, the one that we've gotta get going on and get stuff submitted to you is the, uh, what do we call that? The commercial, the...
McCavens.
McCavens, yeah, I was gonna say, that's why I brought that up.
That's pri, that's priority in the RV part.
Yeah.
So that, and that, that stuff is just, it's in the middle of design right now, so... Got a question for you?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
If it's okay? Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I'm just curious, you, you own one property that's right here on fifty-nine, that already has left turn, right turn lanes, why aren't you starting there? That will be your instant, you could build, you could start tomorrow with no objective, and water is right there, I'm just curious.
Are you talking about the station?
No, I'm talking about down there, the Rose intersection, uh, you, you bought all that property too, and that already has access, and you could start building two subdivisions in, in, in a few months, if you wanted, without climbing all these mountains and millions of dollars in improvements, I'm just curious, it's...
Yeah, this is just the direction they decided to go, so...
Well, and I think you guys are kind of wanting, because you have your brother, these are the areas you kind of wanna have your house, right?
Well, that doesn't play a big role, but yeah, I mean, it does play some, but at the same time, it's just that where we wanna go, and so...
And the two projects that they wanna get in and start making money, make the town money, they've got preliminary approvals on, and we're gonna get those done.
Yeah.
And then, then it'll be hitting the, the lots and the houses, so, that's kind of the direction Travis wanted to go, so...
Okay, item number four, uh, item number four then, the Redstone, why don't we table that till we've all had a chance? We're taping the one, right?
Yeah, this, this was just to, this was just to hear him out, really, so there was really no action actually necessary.
Well, we'll, we'll do, like, you ask and email feedback back to mayor, so.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate this.
And we'll see you again.
Well, I'll be sure to make sure I don't say names or nothing, I'm sorry. See ya.
Thank you, guys.
I'm sorry.
Well, no.
All right, you're fine.
But I'm very excited to have your project, really. Scaring people when you're marching.
It's a quicker way to make to get over there to get to work, that's all.
Well, it's the truth. I think the truth.
All right.
The Chinese buses are gonna go.
Okay, yes, the, the motion has been made to adjourn.
I second.
All right. Vote.
I'm watching Chinese, I'm mayor, I don't, you don't want that broken.
No.